About that, but then I was thinking about dessert when I got home. Maybe to get home on the effects if I didn't talk later.
Oh, okay.
What's for dessert?
Oh, um, I made a spice cake with raisins in it and I have some.
We'll be over.
Greek yogurt.
That sounds good.
Some, some Greek yogurt and some homemade applesauce.
Why didn't you bring some to your ears?
Well.
I started the recording.
Oh, okay.
I'm sure the small talks.
Well, we'll pick this up later. All right, it is six thirty P M. This is the Enfield Planning Board on October eleventh. We are at the Enfield D P W facility and also on the Microsoft Teams platform. Uh, I'm David Frack. I'm calling the meeting to order at six thirty and members present from my left.
Linda Jones.
Eric Russell.
Dan Kylie.
David Frack.
Brad Rich.
Tim Jennings.
Eric Goddard.
Staff members.
Rob Taylor.
Whitney Banker.
Okay, um, we are down one member. Phil Vermeer is not joining us this evening. Kurt, would you like to become a voting member? Should we vote on anything tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. You are. Um, nobody from the public is on video. Nobody from the public is here. There are no hearings. There are no conceptuals. Uh, item five is the Select Board Report. Eric, what have you got to tell us?
Uh, not a lot. The most recent meeting was canceled due to conflicts, so there's no, no update from last time.
Rob, Land Use Administrators Report.
Okay, so I did remember this morning to touch base with our building inspector for some stats for you guys. Um, and we just issued building permits on the one hundred thirty-eight for this year. Uh, how does that compare to last year? At this time last year, we had issued one hundred forty-seven. So pretty darn close within nine permits. Uh, the building inspector's comment there was maybe a few less permits, but the permits that we do have are, are pretty big projects. Not the least of which is Dartmouth College, uh, Sailing Facility, which as you guys probably know is taking on a pretty big uh, presence down on Shaker Boulevard. They, we have had some complaints. They're, they're, they've been blasting.
Blasting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. And, uh.
I thought that was kind of funny that town came out on the listserv that will be blasting Shaker Hill Road. And never, ever, not once did they say why.
Just kind of gouge it out. We're just gonna, yeah. So, and then he also did provide me with a pretty neat report that he files for, I believe it's the U S Census, which is counting, uh, housing units. And this year, uh, counting the Jim Kellerhurst plus six, uh, we're up sixteen units for the town, which I think is good news.
Is that sixteen or sixty?
Sixteen, one-sixty, yep. Yep. Um, and that's pretty good considering I think last year our, our total for the year was twelve. So that does include obviously, like I said, apartments and A D Us.
Is that broken down as to how many A D Us and how many apartments?
Yeah, I could actually share that around if you guys would like to see that.
Definitely.
As a spreadsheet. Yeah, yeah.
That's also good. Like creating a nice little report like of that, like Tim's asking for is also nice because those people talk about the Upper Valley in general and how are towns participating in the expansion of housing? Enfield's pretty much on track with, with doing our fair share.
Absolutely.
Putting these together would.
And there's also a perception because we, we made those changes to zoning ordinance this year. There's a perception that we're doing our part. I think that's also.
It just backs it up as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, uh, yeah, I, I consider that pretty good news. He's certainly busy. Uh, Liam is now, uh, um, on the board of the New Hampshire Health Officials, uh, group, which is, you know, he's the health officer for the town, which is a constitutional position. He has some specific powers granted to him by state law and the state constitution. Um, so he's, he's, they really like him and he's, what Liam's forte is, is he's really good about the regs. He's, he's now probably one of the smartest guys in the state terms of, he, he actually reads the regs. He, you know, the, the, the International Building Code, the book that's that thick, he's read and he can cite chapter and verse. And so he's really, and he attends trainings and he's just constantly improving his knowledge. And so there's not very many people out there. I think even people that have been doing it for way longer than him, I don't think there's many other that are better equipped in terms of the knowledge that he's got now. He's just really, he, you know, he's really meticulous. Some, some people get frustrated with him because he is a by the book kind of guy, but after.
He took me through the book.
Yeah.
I'm going, Liam, just tell me what you want.
Right. But I think what we've seen, I mean, you guys heard from Matt Nill when he was here last time, that people start to realize, okay, this is the guy I, I obviously have to work, but, but I can work with him. You know, he's a very straight shooter. He's not gonna, he's not gonna be S E O. He's really coming to you from earnest. This is what the rules are, you know? And, uh, and he's got a good, good affect. He, uh, particularly is really accommodating for people on the front end of the project, which is come see me before you start, you know, building and when you're still in your planning phase and I'll, I'll help you as long and as hard as it takes to be able to get you as much knowledge. And that's my philosophy too, really. We're here. I mean, we're here every day, so come in, talk to us. We'll help you as much as it takes to get you through any regs and any, you know, challenges. And, and the ounce of prevention is worth the pound of cure. Uh, and the, the old adage, you know, it's better to ask for forgiveness than it is to ask for permission does not apply here. I guess come and talk to us because it will save you a lot of time on the back end. So, uh, he's busy and work, work is certainly a lot happening. I mean, as Eric will know, we're, you know, closing in really seriously now on budget. They had C I P this week. I think budget is, is it next week?
Nope.
Tomorrow, tomorrow night's budget. So there's a lot going on. I think the wage and salary thing is, is coming up and, uh, we're working on strategic planning. We had a meeting with the guy uh, yesterday, uh, so I'm busy with that kind of stuff. Um, I'm very excited to tell you guys as much or as little as you want to hear about the conference that I attended last week in Manchester with New Hampshire Housing. It was called the New Hampshire Housing and Economy Conference. It was at the center of New Hampshire. There was probably three hundred people there. It was a big deal. It was a lot of people and, and of course it's great for us to be there and to be with a lot of people. And you'll hear later on tonight about fruits of that trip. Um, I, you know, had great conversations with many people, including neighboring towns and, um, there's a lot of real estate people there representing. Um, they had round tables on, uh, the reason I went was actually, um, Alice Kennedy from our Select Board had seen it and there was something on there about short term. They had a really awesome rental, a short-term rental roundtable that I picked up a lot of really good stuff out of. Um, they had, uh, really awesome presentations by some architects and design professionals about housing complexes all around the state and what is and isn't working. And then they had this keynote speaker who was absolutely unbelievable. He's a, he's with a big nonprofit based in Washington, D C on, on housing. And he's a fellow and he's an attorney and he's been in the housing industry for almost forty years. And the guy just knows housing top to bottom and he can tell you everything that has contributed to our situation that we're in right now. And he can look at all of the real estate markets from California, Texas, Florida, New England. And he really, I mean, it was very in-depth. He had lots of data behind, cause you know, he, that was his opening lines, like a lot of anecdotes out there. People are telling you what the situation is. He said, throw those in the garbage because I'm gonna tell you based on facts. And he really went through them and it was awesome. And I can tell you a lot about that. And I do believe that they recorded it all. And this was a first-class show. They had, you know, the guys on the round tables have the lapel mics and they had a sound technician and video cameras going. It was at the center of New Hampshire. It was excellent and I picked up a lot of really good information that I'm happy to share. And you necessarily need to go through it all tonight with you guys, but, um, so I can certainly, if you guys have any questions or you want to hear more. And I can also, I think there's, like I said, recordings of some of those or even point you in the direction of some of the presentations that they made, the people that were there. And it's really interesting to see, obviously Grafton County is kind of the epicenter of everything here in New Hampshire because we have like the fastest growing rents, our rental church in Grafton County is going up faster than almost any other county. Obviously inventory is very low here and, you know, that was a lot of the, the conversations, what, what can we do? And, you know, what's causing the problems and all that kind of stuff. So that was really, really interesting. One of the conversations I had, I was sitting with a couple of state guys from the State Office of Planning. And, uh, one of the conversations I had with them is, you know, they have legislation in New Hampshire that allows every town can have a housing commission, just like we have a conservation commission, we can have a housing commission. I said, how many towns in New Hampshire have it? And he came, I was having, I said, ten percent? He's like, no, 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 no. I said, five percent? No way. He's like, maybe two percent? So there's very few towns that actually have it, but it's kind of a neat thing. It's a, it's a town, you know, would be set up by the town meeting, would have to basically authorize it. And it's Select Board, I think appoints members. I think it's either three or five members. And it's kind of like what conservation does. They're, they're really advising the town on issues related to housing instead of conservation. And, uh, you think about every town in New Hampshire has a conservation commission, but not, almost none of them have a housing commission. So that may be something we want to look into and it may be something you guys advocate for or not. I don't know. It's something uh, that the state is looking at. Maybe that instead of it being optional, they make it now mandatory. Every town has to do it, which might actually help things get started. I don't know. We'll see. Um, some people may say it's an unfunded mandate, but you know, as far as the state goes, it costs them nothing. Obviously it costs towns, probably some staff time to get it set up, but it's something to talk about. We could certainly have a discussion at some point about that. Um, let's see. Uh, do you want, we can save it for the discussion about the HOP grant later.
Yeah.
Update you on that. Cause a lot of what I've been working on in the last two weeks since we last spoke is to do with that. Um, TIF, we've got another scheduled meeting. I don't know if Eric, if you've got that. I just sent that out today. We're gonna have a meeting on November first. Um, we're still trying to recruit one more, uh, in district, uh, member for our TIF Committee, TIF Advisory. Um, we have to have a majority of the group has to be, uh, internal to the TIF District. They don't have to live, but they have to own property within. And right now it's Bruce Bergeron who owns Jakes. So he's, he qualifies as an in district. Andrew Bernier is, uh, is in the district. He and his wife own Austin's Kiddos, who you guys approved a number of years ago for the daycare. So he's in the district. Um, Eric Russell is ex officio, uh, Select Board Representative. He is not in the district, unfortunately, just, just outside. Um, and then we also have that in Ben Shapiro who lives on, I believe, Shaker Hill Road. Uh, and so we have, right now we have two in and two out. We can get one more member who has to be in. And so, uh, I actually reached out, the committee actually liked this idea to a woman named Bobby Lines from the North Country Medical Courier business at the Enfield Garage. You guys probably have seen her. Uh, she's awesome. She's super dynamic. She's, uh, she's a great businesswoman. She's got that North Country Medical Courier, which probably has fifteen or twenty people working for her. And then she leases the space to revision energy and to the Enfield Airport. So she's got uh, all of those suites occupied. And I think she actually lives in the apartment upstairs there. And she did have a coffee and we've been there. I've been on a tour and so I'm really hopeful. We're working on getting her to sign up. Would love to have her on board as a, you know, as a, as a successful business owner in the district. And, uh, the, the big priority with that is to update the plan, which, you know, we have our C I P plan that you're familiar with and Eric, um, rightly pointed out, we need to, we need to get our TIF plan sort of in a similar place that the C I P plan is, really kind of polish it up. And so that's the job of the TIF Committee, the Advisory Committee, is to sort of make recommendations that get put on that plan. And it has to be ratified by town meeting. And, uh, any TIF project has to be on that plan. You can't just make up something. It has to already have been sort of pre, pre-approved and pre-screened by the town. And, uh, so that, that's good to see that sort of getting freshened up. And that's sort of in our strategic plan too, uh, that we're talking about on the staff level and with Select Board is to really get TIF back into sort of active again. It's sort of that gotten inactive.
Sort of thought on that is if the, the committee does more than just pay down the bonds, you might actually find some members interested.
Yeah. So that's exactly what we're talking about.
Best of my knowledge, that's what the committee's only done in the past.
Yep.
Um, I think it was that approved list of projects, like ten or whatever it was on the original, but they, I don't think any of them have been even considered, seriously considered.
There is one on there. And that was improved crosswalks, uh, lighting, you know, the newer, uh, we do have money for that. We have engineering actually happening now. And those are, those two on, on Route four, one at Jakes and I think one further up by the middle school.
The school.
And if you've been in Hanover, I don't know if you've been up to Dartmouth lately, all those new crosswalks that have all
Yeah.
Strokes and lights.
The hospitals had them for a number of years.
That's what we're, that's our intention there. And that was something that was approved by town meeting because it was on our plan.
Yeah.
And, uh, the potential development on Route four behind Shaker Valley Auto, that is in the district. And so there could be some serious, uh, opportunities there for some TIF investment in infrastructure. Obviously, you know, we, we invested in the sewer and water extension out there, which we're benefiting from for that project and others.
Yeah.
Uh, especially our public safety complex that, uh, that will benefit from that down at Granite Place. Uh, right across from Dunkin' Donuts and Randy's Car Wash. Sewer waters there. That's thanks to the TIF that, that it got there. Yep. And actually I think the TIF is, remember the number, it's like, it's like a million and a half dollars in the fund, so to speak.
Yeah, there's, there's, it's the right time to freshen, refresh it and then select, you know, make a decision of what projects to do.
Yeah.
But until, you know, every, basically everything is a decade old.
Yeah.
So it's time to rethink it before putting something forward.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Methodist Hill Committee continues to meet. They're on a sort of glide path to have some recommendations for the Select Board by the end of the year. Um, I have coordinated with a developer, Jim Kellerhurst, actually gonna come meet with them at their next meeting, I believe, next week. You guys have probably driven by and seen Jim Kellerhurst actually broken ground on that project. They've dug, uh, trenches for the footings.
Mm-hmm.
So that is actually on its way. And so I'm excited about that. I have actually talked to him. You guys, just give you the quick update on, you know, he owns Copeland Block across the street. He's got a great tenant in the kitchen fifty-six and maybe a couple of other offices, but he's sort of struggled to find commercial tenants for those office spaces that he's got. So he's come in and talked to me and he's asking, what would it take to convert it to residential? And so we have talked about it. Obviously I've talked that he would have to come see you guys for a new site plan. Um, but speaking of Methodist Hill, what's, uh, did we ever get the word from, um, the legal issues related to the Johnson Road property? Uh, cause that, that's where the Select Board went with that. Did we get?
I don't think they've had to report you back yet.
Been a while.
It has, yeah.
Yeah. Um, so yeah, so residential possible. You know, a lot of people have panicked about Main Street converting over to residential. Well, at that conference I went to last week, they're like, don't worry, don't worry. They're like, if you have residential, services will come. And it's absolutely true. And they, they talked about it. I mean, they showed us some awesome examples of what's happened in Manchester. And it's happening in New York City, literally office buildings.
Right.
Gigantic office buildings are being converted to residential.
Right. Our zoning on Copeland Block wouldn't be affected anyways because it's commercial first floor.
Exactly.
Residential, everything else.
What you want, yeah.
Exactly.
It's what I would point to, like cities like Concord and Keene where
Right.
Commercial on the first floor, residential stairs. It's actually pretty awesome. People, why wouldn't you want to live above a pizza place? Uh, smelling that pizza all day might actually be awesome. So I don't know. So, um, obviously housing, 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 that's what everybody's talking about.
Mm-hmm.
At the, at that conference, they said New Hampshire needs somewhere around thirty thousand housing units by twenty thirty to be able to just basically deal with the demand that's, that's there, you know, that.
Did he explain where those numbers come from?
Yeah, so, uh.
I'm not going to go into here, but if you have something that, cause I always question these numbers.
Yeah.
I just like, it doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah. So they say, just in the Upper Valley, they, they said it was like.
I know what they say. I know what they, I read these reports.
Yeah.
But they never say how they come up with these numbers.
I'll get you that guy. The guy literally is, I think he wrote the book on this whole thing. He's, he is the man. And he had, unfortunately his slides that he put up in front of everybody, you know, they were little tiny, like all these facts that he had in there. So I had my glasses on, it's like.
Read the fine French. So one, one big place it comes from is from the decrease in the size of households.
Yeah.
So like in Enfield itself, we saw during Master Planning,
Huge.
Our number, our population declined, our number of housing units increased. And it was all because the number of people per housing unit
Right.
Has decreased from like.
Four point seven to one point seven.
Yeah, well, it's.
In thirty years.
Right. So. But it's, it's the children. You still have two adults typically. No, no.
No, no.
But that, that's my point. It went from.
So four point seven in, in twenty twenty, no, I'm sorry, in, um,
Twenty-two.
Twenty, no, twenty, twenty.
Ninety-seven, three cents.
Yeah. So it's three senses and it was four point seven, uh, thirty years ago and in the twenty twenty went down to one point seven.
Yes. So it was nineteen ninety, every household had four point seven people.
On average.
Alright. In twenty twenty, they had one point seven on average.
And Enfield is the only town where the population has decreased three census in a row in the entire Upper Valley.
Mm-hmm. And so that alone, you need a lot more houses.
Right.
Even though you have fewer people. And so that's, that's driving a lot of the need for more housing units. Is it just fewer people per housing unit?
Right. The school district has five hundred and forty fewer students than they did in nineteen ninety.
Wow.
When you've got sixteen hundred, you go from sixteen hundred to a thousand.
That's big.
That's a big drop, yeah.
So has the number of students per classroom gone down?
Number of teachers gone down?
You know what? Where it came up was in the buses. That's why the bus routes are so long. It's because there were nineteen buses in nineteen ninety. There's only nine today.
Wow.
Wow.
Yeah. Um, just to wrap up, I, uh, I am now the Chair of the RPC's Brownfields Advisory Committee. That's the, uh, uh, that we administer a grant through the EPA for brownfield sites, which are anything in the twenty-nine towns in the RPC's district.
RPC is.
Regional Planning Commission, I'm sorry. Upper Valley Lake Sunapey Regional Planning, which is based in Lebanon. Um, so they got, I think it was about a four-year grant and it's five hundred thousand from the EPA. And we basically, our job is to try to find sites in the Upper Valley that are brownfields, were, were used heavily industrial, that likely have contamination and need basically, uh, analysis, testing and remediation cleanup. And we've benefited from that program, uh, at Shed Street. Um, Shed Street, we did level two, a level one and level two analysis. And now we're doing some clean, cleanup there. We're actually hoping to do demolition of those two buildings that are contaminated with lead and with asbestos. Uh, we have monitoring wells. There's still some significant work to do, but that, as you guys know, because you rezoned it, uh, that is slated at some point through the Select Board. It's kind of a process to go back into some kind of useful, uh, most likely housing use, which we're, we're open for there. Uh, the two sites that will be affected will also be analyzed by us. The, uh, ambulance building and, uh, Union Station, Union Fire Station on Union Street. Those are two sites. You say, oh, well, the ambulance isn't making a mess. Well, it wasn't us making the mess. It was the people that used it a hundred years ago. The railroad was very, very messy.
Well, there was also a.
There was a creamery.
Well, there was an oil company
There was an oil company.
At the, at the, the depot.
Yeah.
Two thousand gallon oil tanks above ground.
Yes. And actually, oil actually can work for our favor because there's actually petroleum cleanup money available. Um, for us, because we are the owner of record on Shed Street, it wasn't oil used there. We are the responsible party for the cleanup, even though a lot of that mess was not our mess. There used to be a kiln there.
Right.
That made, they made boxes. And you could go into the building, you still see the soot on the walls and that's the asbestos where they used to kiln dry boxes in that building. So, and then, yeah, the Union Street used to be a creamery. They used to bottle milk in that building.
It must've been wooden boxes.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yep. So we'll get those, uh, on the list basically. Uh, what's interesting is I serve on that committee with Nancy Merrill from Claremont. Claremont has dozens and dozens and dozens of sites. And they actually, to their credit, they've actually gone and got their own brownfields grant from EPA. And they're doing a great job. I mean, there's slow, steady progress down there to clean up sites. Um, if you guys know any sites, as we're looking and we're actively recruiting, we're gonna put ads in the paper.
I mean, the Baltic Mill might be a.
It is.
I mean.
It's, it's a site, fortunately you gotta have.
All the exterior stuff that's around there.
Yep.
Um.
You gotta have an owner that's willing to work with us.
Well, right, well, that's.
Yeah.
The. Who knows what happens there, but I mean.
But what's interesting about that, I learned this through my experience with the committee. So I've been on it now four years. I was the secretary now and the chair. If you own a property that has potential brownfields and you sell it without doing an analysis through the, through this program, the new owner's on the hook for all the costs of that cleanup. But if they buy it and we've done the analysis, that protects the new owner. Basically it's like an insurance for them that they may not be liable for that cleanup. So, uh, Nancy in Claremont said that they've sold a bunch of big sites down there and nobody, you know, they're buying it just on spec and it's a big mistake on their part because it could be big cleanup too. So we want to find other sites in Enfield and around the Upper Valley. So if you know any, we're doing a big community outreach and, uh, you know, the, the demolition cost estimate that we got for Shed Street, we had put seventy thousand in this year's budget for that project. The lowest bid was a hundred and fifty thousand to clean that site up because of all the remediation of.
What about the asbestos?
This current Enfield transfer station that used to be a dump. Yeah, that one's actually being monitored through the state, the D S. That one is actually, that's on the radar, as it were, as it, because it was, it did have Yep. Registration through the state and being a, a former landfill. So, so they're, they monitor that. And I know in Plainfield, we had one too, that they also, it's on their map, you know, they can. Um, uh, I'm also on TAC through the regional planning. And so that's the Transportation Advisory. And we are obliged through state law to recommend transportation projects that get added to what's called the Governor's Ten Year Plan. And TAC, uh, just, they just had what's called the gas at hearings over the last two weeks. That's the Governor's Advisory, uh, multimodal transport, uh, uh, recommendations that basically how things get added to the ten-year plan. And it's basically bad news there. They, you know, the, the money is kind of here, but the requirements are way bigger. So trying to figure out how to fund it's gonna be a challenge of the legislature. A lot of the money that we spend is coming from federal sources. You know, that comes from tolls and some from the gas tax and all that kind of stuff. Uh, but, uh, right now we still have projects in Enfield on that ten-year plan that are supposedly coming to fruition. The big one, I think you guys have heard from me before, is the Roundabout at Maple in Maine on Route four. Um, they also had some other projects planned for the stretch of Route four from the Lebanon line to about, uh, Twenty Hands Mickey's. There's like, there's some improvements they want to do there. Um, dry bridge. They want to widen the shoulders. Um, there's some drainage work. They're gonna replace what's called the Huntune Brook Culvert or Bridge right there by the community center on four. Um, so that, that's gonna be a big project. It's interesting, that whole stretch that I'm referring to, there's like ten million dollars worth of work and they've got maybe six million set aside for all those projects. So it's gonna have to be prioritization. Uh, when we've met with them, Ed and I, that Roundabout, I think is the priority for everybody in terms of trying to solve that. It's just, you know, we jokingly refer to it as dysfunction junction. And, uh, I think it would be a huge improvement. If you've been over on Route five and, and White River and seen how those have performed, it's just amazing that just pumps traffic through. It takes a little getting used to, but.
It is confusing when it's a two, two lanes.
It is.
And.
Yep.
Uh.
It takes getting used to.
But that's what makes them work is the two lanes.
Exactly.
Well, there's, it's good and it's bad, right?
Yeah.
There's, there's more this types of crashes because as Linda's saying, you know, you're in the two lanes and you're trying to go right and someone's coming this way. But there's no deaths because you're going at the same speed as opposed to.
Yeah. Right. And you, you get used to, all you gotta do is look left.
Yeah.
That's what you have to do. Don't worry about to the right, to the left.
Yeah. Well, there's still one, only one lane in, one lane out in that area. So it's, it's not like a, a two lane, a four lane roads.
Yeah. Although it is, if you come off the highway, that's.
The Route, the Route five one is a two-lane zone.
That's where you get into trouble.
I've been through it when I was traveling, but.
Oh, you're talking.
Yeah, right, by Mickey's there was, it's, in Enfield, it's only gonna be a one.
Yeah, that one presents some challenges because i- in, in Enfield, we have the Hughes Park right next door. That was done uh with a lot of uh federal money. We got some uh, I think it was Land and Water Conservation Fund. Uh, which puts basically a permanent detective easement recreation on the property. So if we wanna do that project, we literally have to cut into some of that easement property. Which means we have to find other places to, like the basketball court needs to be relocated somewhere else by law, you know, that's like. That's the contract you make when you take that money. But we have talked to Maskama Bank and they're willing to sell us or give us the land behind the bank. Which is a nice grassy strip, so that might totally solve that problem. Um. Be interesting to see what, what comes if they actually, I mean, they're, they're doing engineering on it, so they're actually spending money on it as we speak. So uh.
In Maskama Bank is?
No, no, it's attached to DOT.
Oh.
On the, on the round. Yeah, so they've actually done the engineering for all that to show us the, it's not just a sketch, you know, it's real. They can tell you what, you know, the impacts are and, and the easement work and all that kinda stuff. It's uh. It's kinda neat to see that it's coming from a very high level.
Have a website to uh look up these things, to kind of see the stats.
I believe they do.
They do, the ten year plan is on the DOT's website.
Ten year plan.
The ten year plan is on the DOT. Yeah, it's on the DOT's website, yep. They just keep moving it, moving everything out.
I was on anything else.
That's, I mean, I, I can talk all that, I don't want to. So that's good.
Alright, so um, next is legislative report. Yours truly. Um. Let's see. Tomorrow. The Grafton County delegation is going up to. The Department of Corrections in North April. And there will be a public hearing regarding a seventeen million. Ninety-eight thousand five hundred seventy-one dollar and forty-three cent. Uh, internet project, which um. Will put middle mile, which is your basic, as I understand it. Um, it's like your, your main trunks throughout the highway, throughout the county. And that project has, or if we vote to accept it. Will be funded by a grant from the National Telecommunications and Information Administration. To the tune of eleven million nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. Um, which is seventy percent of the total projected cost of that build out. Um, and then we have to vote on whether to take um. Five million one twenty-nine five seventy-two from the county's undesignedated fund balance. And currently. What's that?
That's a big number.
It's a big number. The fund balance currently has ten million one forty-four nine forty-four. Um, which is eighteen point eight seven percent of the FY twenty twenty-four budget. The county policy is to maintain a fund balance of between eight and sixteen percent. So the amount that will be taken out is nine point three three percent. Which still keeps us within the range that the county wants to have. So that's what I will be doing tomorrow morning. And um. The other thing that I am foreseeing happening, um. The municipal and county government committee is going to take up uh retained bills. And decide whether they should be. Uh, kicked on up to the General Assembly for a vote or killed in committee. And the bills are HB seventy, which is about residency requires. Requirements for deputy town clerks. Uh, HB two O two, which is relative to property tax abatements. HB two seventy, relative to the election of Strappard County Commissioners. HB three one three, relative to the reductions from the default budget. For official ballot town meetings. Uh, HB four forty, I'm sorry, four thirty-three. Um, providing that property tax exemptions granted prior to a home sale shall not be applied to the new homeowner. And HB five twenty-six, regulating the use of temporary traffic control personnel. Um, we had a Democrat Caucus uh Zoom session on that earlier this week. Where a lot of these bills were explained to me and whether they made sense or didn't make sense. Um, some of them appear to be um. Bills that were put in by the red team for very unknown reasons. Uh, some of them look like they're, you know, bills that should pass. Are you?
No.
Okay. Um, and if anybody would like to either read the bills or. Have a little discussion on them, um, I don't wanna take up time right now. Uh, but I'm happy to do that either after the meeting tonight or one-on-one. Uh, at some other time between now and the eighteenth, which is when the. Um, the committee will meet. And uh, I'd promise that that should be a fairly short meeting. Uh, veto session is coming up on the fourth Thursday of the month. All the bills that the governor vetoed will be reconsidered. And I have a list of those um, also if anybody's interested in it. So that is the legislative report as I know it. Any questions or comments, Kurt?
Um, more of a comment, and when you get stuff like that, that's directly related to a planning board issue. I mean, some of them sound interesting to me, others like, I don't care. But if it's directly planning related, then if you could, as Rob, to just include that in the package. Um.
Sure.
We can just sort of give a roundtable opinion for you to. Sort of, as a citizen, as a, what are you, what are you um, get, drawing a blank on the term.
Constituent.
Constituent, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was trying to come up with, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that would be um, I think, very helpful.
Saying, I just woke up and thought of this.
Yeah, um, I, I'm of the opinion that pretty much none of this has to do with. Um, with our mission as a planning board, uh. If, you know, do, do you agree on that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But you, I think you said you were on the committee that.
Yeah, with the municipal and county government.
Yeah.
And there's gonna be a lot of uh land use stuff.
Yeah.
That comes up over the course of the next twelve months. And that's why I wanted to be on that particular committee because. Um. Uh, you know, I like to think I have a little bit of knowledge about that and can be useful. Unlike some of the other people on the committee who have no idea about land use.
Yeah.
Um, one, oh, one other thing that I will say that was discussed in caucus. Is the fact that there is some sort of a special committee on housing. That the legislature established. And they are, they are proposing bills. And apparently, leadership is turning a deaf ear to requests from. Municipal and county government committee that these housing issues or these housing bills. Which are land use bills as well, um. Should also be looked at by our committee. So I think there's gonna be, you know, a lot of requests to have. Um, more than one committee look at bills that relate to housing because somehow it relates to land use. Tim.
Uh, thank you, David. Um, with the report, I, I, I think you. With, with no guidance from the board as to what we're looking for in that report, uh, what can you do? Just tell us everything, but. Um, it seems like we should, we should provide you some, some guidance as to what. We wanna, you know, the, for instance, I. Uh, the whole thing about the. And internet infrastructure and the, down to the dollars and cents, I. I mean, we do have a limited time.
Mm-hmm.
I think um, for me personally, what I, what I would recommend is. Just limit, limit your report to anything that has to do with uh, uh, land use issues and housing. Uh, not well defined those track, but you, you, you've got sense enough to know what we're talking about, otherwise. I don't think this is the form to take up the time. I don't know what the rest of you think, but that, that's, that would be my suggestion.
Any comments uh reacting to Tim?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I don't need the dollars and cents, I'm not doing the vote, so. Um, you know, it's interesting, but it's just numbers to me. And um, yeah, sort of like the executive summary of. I mean, like, seriously, what you gave, but, yeah, I mean, really, as the planning board, it's like, having. Give you to the planning board stuff for the most part. Um, unless there's something that's really pressing that you just feel like we should be aware of and.
Mm-hmm.
Type of thing.
Okay. Um, I, I will say that uh, you know, this broadband middle mile thing. Um, that is going to have quite an effect on housing. Because people can work remotely if they have good solid internet connections and. While it may not have a large effect on Enfield per se. Um, some of the other towns which are internet starved, uh, it could have a major effect on that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's because Enfield has the fast road put in, I, I don't know if you can. I don't know what roads they went down. I know I got it, so they went up Block Haven, cause they came down my road. Um. Yeah, because you had Comcast. Yeah, anyway, it was Comcast, the fiber optic didn't go. Um.
I, I would, I would dispute that.
So would I.
Because I had Comcast before.
Right.
Um, before we got Hub sixty-six.
Right. Well, maybe because they were going up to get the other roads off of Block Haven.
Could be.
That's how they got there. Yeah, okay.
Told me that it was because they had a high installation fee. And the people who already had a provider had no interest in splitting up. I think my piece of it was gonna be, it was either three thousand or six thousand.
Right, yeah, right, because you had to pay. I got mine for free because I had nothing. I had zero where I was currently living. Um.
And then you have to pay installation?
No.
That was covered by the grant?
Yeah. Yeah, but I did see, just on that topic, when I was traveling cross-country, I saw this. Them putting in the fiber optic and a lot of, I mean, these were places that were really both. I mean, you go for twenty, thirty miles before you even see a driveway. And they're laying fiber optic cable down the road.
Mm-hmm, man, it does make a lot of sense.
Yeah. So.
Anyhow, um, that's, that's what's going on and uh, I thank you for. Your comment about directing um, my report to. Things that are more closely aligned with land use policy, so we'll finally do that in the future. Um. Next minutes of September twenty-seventh. Are there any questions, comments?
One change on line one twenty-one. Um, I think we meant to say um, will not exceed a height of thirty-five feet.
Yeah, I caught that too.
Yeah. That's all I found. Um. Ring two seventy. These size prints are actually eighteen by twenty-two.
Eighteen by twenty-two?
Mm-hmm. Um, so I find my top here, no.
Now, I think the, the comment that Brad made was the only thing that I had concern about. Anyone else?
I move we accept the minutes as corrected?
Second, motion made, seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, abstentions. Minutes are approved as corrected. Um. Zonied Ordnance Rewrite Project Update. Um. Tuesday, Rob called me in the middle of the morning and said. There's going to be a Zoom call with um, people from the Lake Sunapee. Regional Planning Commission and. Randy and Rod from PlaySense, and would I like to join? So I said, sure, line up. Um, so we held a um, a meeting. And I guess uh PlaySense had reached out to the regional planning people. As a potential subcontractor, um, we spent probably half an hour. Speaking with Meg, and I can't remember her last name, who's the director.
Oh, Megan.
Megan. Um, and she also had one of her um. Employees on the call as well. I can't remember her name.
Majestic.
Majestic. So um, the, rather than belabor the points of the conversation. Um, the bottom line was that, yes, they're available. They give us a discounted rate because they are, um, because we are a member. And um, the, the, the bottom line conclusion was that they are pretty much. Um. Young staff. Um, not to say that people just out of college or with a year or two of experience. Um. Aren't necessarily up for the job.
Who's the they? They are young.
The RPC.
The RPC staff.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Alright.
Um.
You didn't mean Randy and Rob.
No, no.
Alright.
They, they are not, they are not young and inexperienced. Um, so the, basically. You know, we decided that uh, we. You know, we decided that, uh, we did want somebody with. A lot more experience in facilitation. Uh, particularly if we were to pursue the model in which, um. PlaySense created the content and a subcontractor. Then did the actual public involvement phase. So that led us to, um, one or two people that Rob had met. At this con, this housing conference the previous week. And, um, after the RPC people signed off of the Zoom conference. We talked a little bit about the two people that Rob had met. Um, one of them was described as, um, quote urban planner. Which might not be a good fit for Enfield, which is more rural. And the other person, um. Seemed like, might be a better fit. And Brandy and Rod are going to reach out to this person. And give them some information and blah, blah, blah. So that's kind of where I left it and I will let Rob fill in from anything that. For anything that happened after our Zoom conference on Tuesday.
Yeah, so in the last two weeks, it's been a lot of, I mean, as you guys had sort of. Asked me to, lot of calls, lot of different connections made. Started out with the, uh. Grant people, people that we got the grant money from. There's basically three. Agencies that are sharing administrative responsibilities on this grant. It's New Hampshire Housing. Organization called Plan New Hampshire and UNH Extension. And I've been through some of their training with their housing academy. Um, and so I have good, good contacts there. So we, I set up a meeting. I had a meeting with. Two people from New Hampshire Housing and one person from, uh, Plan New Hampshire. Uh, so it's probably just a day or two after our last meeting. To sort of bring them up to speed as to what had happened with Brandy announcing to us that she was gonna move to, uh, New Zealand. And they sort of said. Don't worry, we're gonna work with you and we are absolutely happy to, uh, approve a subcontractor. To work with your existing contractor. Uh, they, they feel very strongly that Brandy is still a very viable. Uh, person to work with. Obviously, we still need to sort of supplement with the in-person. Uh, facilitation and visioning and all that kind of stuff that we on the ground here in Enfield. Uh, and, but their advice was because as we've seen. Anybody that's good in that business here in New Hampshire is very busy. They've given out over seventy of these hot grants in the state. And so, uh, you know, one of the first ones we reached out to after we got conversation with Brandy. Was the guys that we talked to for master planning out of Plymouth called Resilience and said, hey, would you be willing to? Step in and service, uh, us with, uh, with PlaySense. He said, sorry, I've got five of these projects on my plate already. We're tapped out. And that was sort of the theme from our discussion with the New Hampshire Housing and the Plan New Hampshire people was. You're gonna find that around the state. Anybody that's a planner. That is good at writing zoning ordinances and mapping and all that kind of stuff is gonna be busy, really busy. So they were very much of the opinion, we, we talked about three options last time. We can continue with Brandy and do the lifting here on, on the ground ourselves. We can stay with Brandy, find somebody to be the middleman facilitator. Or we can throw the whole thing out and try to start fresh with somebody completely new. They were very much, option two is your best option. And it's just obviously gonna depend on if we can find somebody. So I had reached out also to Nate, uh, you guys remember Nate Miller who used to sit in this seat? Uh, he was also the executive director of the regional planning in, in the Upper Valley. Uh, he's an Enfield resident. You guys remember his wife Rita who sat on this board? She's also a professional planner and had great conversation with Nate. Nate was awesome. Nate actually said, hey. If you guys get into a situation where you cannot find anybody. I will be your last resort. And I was like, that's awesome. And I had said to him, just what you said, Dan. We could, we could work it around your schedule if we needed to do events on Saturday mornings when you're home. We would do that, you know, that's kind of things that we would be willing to do. He's like, yeah, just, just keep looking, you know? He gave me a couple of names, uh, we tried the woman from Thetford or Tara Manford. Uh, and we made a bunch of calls. Again, if they're in this business and they're good, they're busy. And in fact, most of them are tapped right to the max of their capacity. So, uh, so that conversation with Plan New Hampshire and, and, uh, New Hampshire Housing was awesome. They're. They're, they're becoming, like Eric said, they're sort of becoming big fans of Enfield because of the stuff we've done. And our sort of proactive approach and so they're very much like, listen, we'll. We, we're not, you know, gonna say no to anything, just, we just wanna have obviously visibility on whoever you do end up with. For any work that gets done in this grant. In fact, I did file. You had sent me the reminder yesterday, we had to send a progress report on the grant. I filed the report yesterday, just in time. Uh, so anyways, uh, I told you I was going to that seminar or conference last week. Just so happened to be that I sat down at one of the big buffet tables or, you know, uh, tables in the dining room. Next to a woman and she's right here and I struck up a conversation with her. I thought, oh yeah, what do you do? She's like, oh, I'm a facilitator, private, uh, facilitator consultant. And I'm like, oh yeah, tell me about your, you know, work histories. She said, well, I used to be the executive director of Plan New Hampshire. And I'm like, oh, really? So I said, I, I need your card. And so she handed me her card. Here's her card. And I did actually run into two, uh, more people at that conference that were also. One of the most professional planner, the one that David was talking about. Another was a guy that worked for the state. Uh, and then it was one retired guy. Uh, so I came back, uh, from that conference and I put those business cards on our scanner. I scanned them and I immediately emailed them to Brandy and I said, here's some more possible leads for us because I've been working with her. And I said, what? What, I mean, obviously it's gotta fit for her too. If it's not gonna fit, that sort of blows it all up. So. He immediately reached out to this person. And they have talked, they talked prior to our meeting that we had yesterday. And Brandy is very encouraged that this is possibly gonna be our solution. So, uh, the exciting thing about this woman, and I did pull up her, you guys can, at your leisure if you want. I've got her website. This is Robin, you guys, maybe some of you might recognize her?
Go back, go back to the very top picture. It's, it's great.
At the, at the home?
At the homepage.
This one right here?
That one right there.
You know her?
I don't know her.
He looks like a model.
She, she does, but it's, it's a picture that sucks you into the website.
She, this is Robin though, I'll show you that.
Robin appears at the end.
She is right here. You guys may remember her because she's worked in Enfield before. She came here, Nate, Nate told me, the morning I talked to him, had a great conversation with him. And he's, Nate is very excited. She came here and did a charrette in Enfield about ten years ago. And it was the sort of.
Community bill?
It was the, it was the one where the, the kernel or the seed of. Massoma Lakeside.
Massoma Lakeside Park one, that was the weekend one.
Yes, yeah. And she was the facilitator. She was the executive director of Plan New Hampshire. And she did an awesome job because I've heard a lot of good things about it. I mean, I served. I still serve on the Massoma Lakeside Park Committee with Mary and Grubbe. And that's where that thing sort of came off the ground. It was.
Brandy has to be past possible to getting her. Because we need to do it now.
So we have a meeting with her on Friday. And she's already talked to her. Yes, and Brandy and me. David possibly, this schedule is.
Uh, what time?
I think it's eleven on Friday.
Uh, probably not gonna be able because I'm in another meeting in Orwell, Vermont.
The, the moral of the story is she is. For this job, choose what you want. Perfect. Because she's a facilitator, she's not a planner. That's not what we're looking for. If we can get somebody like her to come and help us here do our stuff, charrettes, visioning sessions. Uh, focus groups, uh. You need, but all those kind of things that we've done already. We, we know what we need to do. She's gonna be awesome because that's what she does. She is. I think somewhere near Concord. Downlandstown, some, somewhere down there. She has multiple master's degrees, including business administration. Uh, library and information science, bachelor's in medieval studies, which might help us with wrangling people. Uh, work history.
MBA is the same place, so she's gotta be good.
She was the executive director of Plan New Hampshire five oh one C three from two thousand eighty, two thousand twenty-one. And this is, this is who we're working with. I, I, my heart started beating yesterday. When I got on that meeting that you and I were on, I got on about five minutes before it started, before the regional planning people came in. And we were talking to them, but Brandy told me about this and said they'd had a conversation. And they think this is gonna work. Obviously, there's some details that need to be worked out. How does she get paid? Obviously, gonna have.
We got a contract with Brandy.
Well, she should be happy because it's gonna save her.
Right, it's gonna save her the contract and it saves us because if we went for another contract, we'd have to put it out to bid. And would have to be the select board that approved it.
Yeah, yeah. So I will keep you guys up to date, but I am pleasantly encouraged. And talking to Brandy yesterday, I don't know if you've got this. And Rod, I was encouraged. I know that there was, you, you guys were, we were all kind of like, oh my God, really? It was bad. But I, 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 they sounded encouraged because if they have somebody awesome on the ground, working with them.
It sounds like a fairly good solution. I'm really pleased it goes to you. Um, it's not optimal in my humble opinion. I'm still pissed at Brandy, uh, but I think this could save it.
Yeah, and i- in our conversation with the people from regional planning. Um, we did go, go over a little bit about the process and how. Uh, Brandy and Rod would relate to. The facilitator. And how the information would flow back and forth. How Brandy and Rod would relate to our group. How the facilitator would relate to our group. So I, I think they've done. A little bit more headwork on the logistics of how this thing would work from. Literally the other side of the world. And, um, you know, like, like Rob ju, uh, like Brad just said, it's not an ideal situation. But. It, I, I think with the right facilitator, and I have not yet met, um, this, uh.
Robin.
Robin. Um, you know, I, I, I think it has a fairly. Better than fifty percent chance of working and coming out with a. Um, a rewrite of the zoning regs that the town will buy into. Um, you know, as, as I've been saying ever since we got into this. Public input is the key. And we've gotta have a lot of, a lot of public events in a fairly short period of time. Uh, but it, it looks doable. It really does.
I would also, just, just, I mean, I absolutely, I'm right, right there with you. I think if this was before COVID, I would, I would be much more concerned, but having been through COVID and we did our master planning through COVID. Yeah, we did prove out the ability of these technologies to actually be fairly successful. I mean. We've had, I've had, now I have three or four meetings on this very subject. On the computer, you know, there, we're, I mean, we, we, we get into a room where people are on video chat with you. And it's just as good as sitting in the room. I mean, there's obviously some advantages to being in the room, but.
More content, if you will. When you're sitting across from somebody.
No doubt about it.
My experience with master plan. I mean, you can be effective with Zoom and stuff, but when you're sitting across and you're having side conversations, it's, you get a lot.
Absolutely. We, we absolutely, that's, that's, I think that's what this woman will be able to bring to the table is to be able to help us.
For sure.
And we do have some, we do have, I mean, David and I are both certified facilitators. We did the UNH. The UNH extension person that's ma, that's managing it was the woman that taught David and I over a two-day class. Facilitation. We're now certified in that and.
But we're, we're like the regional planning people.
We're rookies.
Facilitation is tough. It is to do a good job.
You've got a lot of pre-planning to do before, before you go, before you're public.
And the RPC did say, to her credit, Megan. She's like, we will help you as much or as little, and if you find somebody else, that's great. We'll skin off our back. But, you know, and Brandy did say that, maybe, maybe we bringing them in too on a big event. If we have some kind of big thing. This woman's helping us and, because the RPC, we, we get service from that.
That you're, you're gonna be more effective with more frequent, smaller settings. Because people feel comfortable with a smaller setting. I mean, just from our experience with the master plan, when you were talking to two or three people at the, uh, market. Uh, you know, the, the, the market on Saturday. You, you, you get a lot more information than, than when you get to a larger group, people stop talking.
Yeah, I agree.
So, uh, basically the way the revised timeline might work. Is public involvement be starting in January. And continue for maybe three or four months. And then, um, Brandy and Rod will be drafting stuff. Coming back to us with their drafts. Uh, possibly some more, uh, like focus groups like we had to, to review the draft. Um, and then the whole thing has gotta be wrapped up by the end of July next year. Because that's when the grant fairy turns into a pumpkin.
So we, so basically, we have to have a completed document by July.
We have to have it billed.
We have to have it billed. And I don't know how flexible or inflexible. The NHOP people are going to be about billing for work that is still in progress. Initially, we had, you know, thought that the draft would be done. Um, by the end of July, something that we wouldn't be comfortable with. And then there would be additional information and materials for public sessions. That would go on, um, you know, basically in the second half of twenty twenty-four. And I, I don't know how that's gonna work right now.
The, the wo, the woman that I talked to, the, the, another business card I got in my office, that's the urban planner. Specializes in form-based code. Uh, she was the planner in, uh, Peterborough. And she wa, she was a state rep as well. Um, her advice to me was that you guys, and we can start this up immediately. Start really, we, we put it up on the whiteboard and like, start getting at your ideas, like literally. You guys start doing your work to say, what do you want? I mean, I, I obviously have lots of ideas. We wanna hear from you. And start literally throwing those up. We could take pictures of them or write them in notes or whatever. And, and we can use our time right now between. Now and the time that we resolve whether or not this is gonna be working. To, to sort of identify what exactly would you like to see sussed out in this process? Because obviously, a lot of this can come from you guys, right? You guys are the planners here.
The first thing I'd like to see is a deliverable we were supposed to get tonight from Brandy.
Yes, the review of the existing ordinances.
Yeah, where's that? Is she, she gonna present that tonight?
She has not done that because all this has been in flux, obviously.
So she missed a commitment?
She missed a dead.
According to the contract?
It was a schedule that we had hoped would be ready, but.
I don't understand.
That was my concern.
I don't understand.
I have.
But maybe she's thinking about something else? Do you see my concern here? Deadline, we signed the contract. She has a deadline for something that we wanted delivered tonight. Did she even say that she wasn't gonna make this deadline?
She did.
She didn't, interesting. This is not good. That's not how you do business.
I, 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 I agree.
I know you agree.
I, I agree and. I, I agree, and I don't know of any viable paths out of this.
Well, I think the first thing we could do is that we could ask her why. Why did you miss your deadline for tonight? Why did you not inform us you were gonna miss the deadline? I think, as a, as a partnership in this contract, you have the right to ask why. There might be.
I will ask her, and, and she should be at the next meeting, I mean, she should be here giving us some review.
Or she should at least send us.
Th- th- this was my concern as soon as it was announced, and it was Kurt's, uh, concern too, is that okay, she's trying to find someone to work with, but sh- she's taking her eye off the ball. And, and, and is, is this pattern going to continue? That's my concern, and it's not a big deal that she missed this, right? But it, it's, it's a red flag.
I ag- I agree.
Well, the target, the, the clock is ticking, is the issue. And that's why I'm wondering, it's like, what's the drop deadline, deadline for the grant to be getting money from the grants? And if we submit a half-completed document to the grant fund, just say, sorry, this is not what we expected, we don't pay.
I'm guessing the grant doesn't require that you have a completely written final draft zoning ordinance in order to satisfy the requirements of the grant.
That's my question.
I would expect that they would in order to pay the full amount of the grant.
Well, no, not typically.
No, because it has to be approved by town meeting anyways, so.
It's gonna be a working draft.
A working draft. Right, that's all you need, you don't need a final draft, you need a working draft.
We're paying for the process. Consultants to help us, but you know, if, if say next June, we find ourselves split, we can't agree on what the ordinance should, should actually say.
They've done their job, it's up to us to iron out the splits.
Right, so we really oughta, um, maybe look a year ahead and set a course of deadlines at a town meeting, ultimate deadline, but, and then back up from there as to what dates we need to hit with a zoning rewrite. I mean, I'd still like to shoot for that twenty-five day, March ten, twenty-five. Get a zoning ordinance to try it out.
Yeah, I, I think that's realistic.
Particularly if what you just told us, what advice was given, that, that we, we go ahead and start talking about issues. I've been suggesting that for months, and was told that we need to have a consultant here, and so if that's, uh, if that's something we, the board wants to do, I think we should go ahead. I'd say, two weeks from today, we should, we have very light load, we have one voluntary lot merger, which as you guys know, is the sort of lowest.
Ten minutes.
Exactly. Then you guys could literally start saying, man, what would you like to see? Here's our zoning ordinance, what do you wanna do?
Because we get stuck with some multi-meeting application, application.
Right, we could.
We're gonna get swamped.
We could get swamped.
Multiple meetings. With a lot of public, um, saying no. And is there any, currently, is there any town funds invested in this, other than your time? I mean, there's like money designated from town meeting, or? Okay, so it's a hundred percent grant funding.
Hundred percent grant funded, except for staff time. Now, actually, that's in the grant, isn't it? It is.
What I'm trying to get to is, like, if, if we get to the point where it's like a drop dead, like, this completely collapses on us, the town's not out of funding. Town didn't spend money and get nothing to return.
And I, I think we're going to know if this is gonna be a workable thing, or whether it's just totally not workable pretty soon into it. Um, you know, my guess would be if the facilitator is supposed to start in January with public involvement, I think, you know, after three or four public engagement meetings, we're gonna know if this is a viable model or not.
Yeah, but then this money's actually going out the door, and someone's gonna have to pay it.
Well, yeah, I mean, mu- money is gonna go out the door, but if it's not working, we can cancel the contract and not, you know, we, we won't have a zoning ordinance, but we won't be out town funds or federally.
The, the frustrating thing is that I don't think we can cancel the contract, because it, time's too short. And, and, and we've signed the contract, and we've gotta work with our, um, and this, hopefully this new person will work out, so the, the most frustrating thing is that we're stuck, and we're stuck in a situation that might go just fine. But I'm concerned.
Right, I talked to Rita last week, the only reason that her and Nate would do it at all is so we didn't lose the grant. That's why they said their last resort, I.
I don't blame them, I, it was nice of them to offer.
Right, exactly, they, but it's not there, it's not an ideal thing for them, so.
So the the other option that was, was brought up, dismissed based on your thought, David, was the R, the RPC doing this for us? It's, uh, they would have a lot riding on getting that done well. Their reputation is kind of on the line.
Hey, you should have to balance the two risks here.
The things I've been involved with, not with planning board, but other things with them, has been that they're idealistic, mean very well, um, but just sort of don't quite get whatever group I was with.
Smooth, Ivy Tower.
It's an academic thing, they're writing a paper about it, and it's a really good paper, but we're dealing with our own issues, we don't need to, someone to write a nice article about.
Well, especially with the facilitation, I mean, there, there's going to be tense moments. And, and you need to have someone that can handle that.
Exactly.
And, and young kids are not gonna be able to handle.
That, that is why.
Most of us here would not be able to handle that.
That, that is why I am very much not in favor of letting RPC work on this, uh, cause they don't.
I, I think what it's gonna have to take.
They don't have an experienced staff.
Yeah, I, I think it's gonna, what it's gonna have to take is a lot of extra management from our part of Brandy. I think we're going to have to stay on top of her. And, um, you know, to an extent, micromanage it, which none of us have the time for. Um, but I think that's what it's gonna take.
Brad, I'd like to make a, some, a comment so that you can be quoted as the board being very concerned that she missed a deadline, she didn't tell us.
Absolutely, I, I think it, I think the fact that she missed a deadline and did not tell us that she missed the deadline is concerning. I think we deserved, at the minimum, of, of why and, and why she missed it, and even if she remembered she missed it.
So when we get this facilitator, she agrees, he's gonna wanna be paid. Um, and right now, it's gonna be out of the grant.
She's a subcontractor.
Okay, I know, but it's still Brandy's being paid by the grant. So, so at the end of the result, it's, it's grant money that's paying for this. So if we get, if we agree to this, and we tell Brandy to stop working, which we were already told, but obviously, we did have enough to see part of what we asked for, but we say, look, we're gonna go forward with this, and you are gonna be the main contractor, you are the main contractor for the grants. This woman's the facilitator, and then we get a month or two into it, the facilitator is here in New Hampshire, not an issue. Brandy in New Zealand just does stop returning phone calls, and just goes blank on us. What happens?
You don't pay her.
But who, she, the facilitator wants to get paid.
Well, that's the facilitator's contract with Brandy.
That has to be very clear with them two. The town's not on the hook. If this thing goes south, there has to be some little clause in there that if we.
The town's not gonna have a contract with a facilitator.
No. Yeah, okay.
So it's.
It's up to the facilitator to get the money from Brandy.
The facilitator that's, this, don't be coming towards us.
They will understand that, and then our contract is very deliverable-based. It's not time and materials, it's not hourly-based, it's deliverable-based. So payments based on deliverables, as is the grant payments. So, as long as, so we have to be very diligent on the deliverable, on accepting deliverables when we receive them. Because we're gonna then blow those through, probably little, there's always a little massage.
Yeah, it has to be.
And then we get paid on the, on, after that, and I don't know if there's a paid when paid in our contract with Brandy or not, but, um.
Now, what happens?
Was based on this first thing that she missed.
If there's a conflict between what Brandy submits and what we thought we were going to receive.
Then you have to go through the deliverable, you have to, Rob and everybody will have to work with Brandy to get an acceptable deliverable before payment's made.
Yeah, it's gonna have to be a consultant.
I mean, we, we, we would have that situation whether she was here, or whether she's in New Zealand.
Right, right, but it makes it more difficult to extract that when, on both ends, when you're in New Zealand.
For sure.
Well, yeah, but when you tell them they're not gonna get paid until they come up with an acceptable product, uh, that, that provides a little bit of motivation.
I'm sort of working on worst-case scenario.
It's not a great situation.
But it's the only situation we have.
Forget the grants. And we'll try for something next year. I mean, that's the, that's the, um.
Well, you're not gonna get any money from the town to do it. How's that for an answer?
Or, or, or hope for another grant.
You're not gonna get seventy thousand dollars from the town to do it.
No, no.
The budget committee is not gonna approve that.
More grant money coming through.
Well, I, I mean, I I mean, I appreciate where you're coming from, Dan, but also, um, the town needs, and I think the other boards would agree, needs a zoning rewrite.
I agree.
The need may, may determine how how supportive the town will be in terms of finding the money.
The, the problem is that there's, you know, we've got a very large increase in the operating budget last year, and next year's gonna be.
Well, all I'm going to say, Tim, is people were glad that we got the grant. And now that we got, when you get a grant, if we don't, if we don't do this based on the grant, it's gonna be real hard to get money out of the town budget for it, cause they're gonna say, well, you got a grant, you never did it.
Yeah, and, and we also had the, the money set aside for the, uh, ma- uh, master plan, finishing the master plan, I'd have asked about this before. Is that still in play?
It's, it's in play in the sense that the money has been allocated. Um, we don't have a contractor yet. We need to encumber that money by signing a contract with someone by the end of the year, so that the money can carry over into twenty twenty-four, but.
Calendar.
Calendar.
And that what, that money. That money was, was also, uh, to be, uh, removed from fund balance. And so when I did talk to Ed about this, he was less concerned about us on the mast- on the master planning project and, and getting that money, cause he said if we need to, we'll go back, fund balance again next year. People would understand, okay.
It's still there.
Our, our top priority here is finding a solution to the zoning rewrite problem. I don't think we're there yet, um, there aren't a whole lot of options.
But a good options. We have one good option.
And Friday, we'll know more.
Can we get an email after that meeting? Give us your impressions? You know, two sentences?
No problem. That's at eleven. I'm gonna see if I can change my schedule later in the day.
Yeah, cause, yeah, we get an update of what's, the outcome of that meeting is prior to our next meeting, that would be, then we'll have something to discuss.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
Um, with your permission, I would like to facilitate at next meeting some high-level discussions about what we'd like to see in our future new ordinance. Maybe use the whiteboard. Spitball a little bit.
Well, and also, if, if Friday's meeting goes well, can we agree to lock it in?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Well, that's what I was thinking too, let's, it's authorized, David.
It's the best option. So lock it in.
David, if you can't make it, I'd be happy to make it. I know I can't vote for you or anything, but I'll be happy to make it if you can.
Let, let me, um, I've gotta talk to somebody tomorrow to see if we can change our plans. And, uh, why don't you participate anyway? I, I, that's what I was gonna say is.
I'd be happy to.
I'm pitching that day, so I can't.
So, um, next meeting when we spitball ideas, so we're, we're talking fifty thousand foot?
It's where we gotta start.
Give me an example, Kurt.
Well, um, what, where do we wanna draw some zoning lines in a broad sense? I mean, that's master plan, that gave us which I really appreciate they did it fuzzy, because that's the master plan, but we have to take the fuzziness out of the.
We have our drawing race map.
Looking at, do we wanna go by law boundaries or by distance? You know, question one, and then where do you draw that line? Get that as a visual. And then, then from there you go to, okay, what do you allow and not allow in those, in those areas?
Uh, there's some districts you're gonna get rid of. Oh, you're gonna, I, I'm sure we're gonna add, but there may be some.
Start with just a blank slate. There is no district. District to be today, today, not thirty years ago.
I'm sorry, I caught it off.
But that's what we wanna be.
You haven't asked me yet, Brad, I got some good ideas.
Then you go from, just in broad sense, downtown, you're gonna call a downtown district. What do you wanna permit in your downtown dri- districts? You have a rural district, um, what do you wanna permit in your rural districts?
And it's not based on the size of the lot, maybe.
No, 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 it's all, it's, everything's a blank page.
We have, uh, thirty minutes to discuss the, uh,
Rules and procedures.
Rules and procedures. I, I'm hoping that I looked at a, a wrong version of it, cause my, my take is that
This is the version you sent me.
I don't think so, cause I, it should only have two colors at the top.
Mine has two colors.
Mine has two colors.
Mine has two colors.
Proposed change in new words.
But open the one that you sent me, it says right here, ten, eleven.
Yeah, that's the right one.
Okay, it, you know, my, my take on reading it is that some things that I was pretty sure we had decided to go out. To go out are still there, and there's seems to be like it's, it's gained some. Fat, for lack of a better term.
Wordiness.
Redundancy.
Does yours have a date at the bottom?
Mine does. Cause when we, when we were, we were in here doing it, I was saving it the whole time, and I sent you what I saved, so I don't know, is this. Is it this track changes thing, uh, which I'm not.
Track changes, maybe that will.
How do we do it?
I always fumble around with this, the track trick and the track changing thing.
Over to review.
Review tab.
Where is it? Right there, above there.
Above there, right there.
Uh, should it's showing markup, so it's showing markup? Click on that, you have options, and it's already showing markup. Then you go above that, it says all markup. As it was showing all of the, everything, we could pick different variations.
Yeah. That literally from your email, slid right into this folder, and that's the name you gave it, is it on?
Take that. Review, um, let's see, um.
It's under the all markup.
I think what you've got here is, uh. Track change, you need to accept all changes, that's what we need to do here.
Yes, 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 you're right.
Where's that?
So it.
It's right now.
Let's go to, uh, go to the all markup above.
Yes.
Yeah.
It won't get rid of the changes, but click on it, and if you go down to, uh, no markup.
Right.
Now it's showing you what, once you accept the changes.
I think that might have been what, because when I sent you the document that we were working on. I absolutely saved it while we were talking, I saved it three or four times and.
Scroll down, we'll, we'll check it.
Yeah, because all I left in there was just I highlighted what we, what we talked about, or what we had agreed to change in yellow.
Yeah.
Does it match what you guys are looking at?
Yeah.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah. Next one should be a big, yep, big paragraph gone.
Continuing.
Next page is gonna have one little one and one big one, yep. That's it. What we've got.
I mean. Go down to line one thirty-five through one forty-one.
And where are the line numbers? We don't have line numbers.
Oh, well, go down, you, you'll see that this one here.
Meetings number.
I, I thought we had decided maybe two meetings ago that. The board cannot. To get somebody recused.
Well, it's way it's worded.
I went back, I read the minutes, and then I went to the video, and reviewed everything, and while you're yet, while you're right, we talked about it. We never really came to conclusion on this. It seemed to me that we, we just decided to just leave the wording that was there, there. And, and that's best I could just determine what we, what we did.
I, I thought in the meeting that we had with Ed Morris, that he had said that. That's basically contrary to state law.
No, no, this is state law, it's non-binding. You can't tell somebody they have recused, you can have a vote.
Can you?
Yes, you can have a vote, but that's up to them, it's still up to them.
Right, it's an advisory vote.
It's an advisory vote only, it's non-binding, which is what this says, and that's what six seventy-three fourteen says.
Okay.
Yeah.
How you doing?
Stranger.
Yeah.
Easier to look at it.
Do we go and take it from the top then?
Cause the originals had that you could do it. You could ta- you could take a vote and they had to recuse, which is counter to six seventy-three fourteen.
Right.
Yeah, so this, this is true to what the.
Think I changed it.
And anyways, what's.
And what's currently there is what state law.
Right.
State, so.
Right.
We just leave it as is.
Yeah.
Why can't I change anything on here?
So because of the mode we're in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, well, scroll on down, I, I think there was only one, there were two things, I think. Said I was gonna come up with some wordsmithing to get back with you, and that's, that's tonight. Now, is this, is this the right? Order of business?
Is on, yes.
Yep.
I thought we put approval of minutes.
Down.
After the select board administrative and legislative report. That's what.
Yeah.
Okay, um.
So we'll flip that down there.
So, so. Units goes where?
After the administrator's report.
Okay.
So we were gonna have the.
Legislative.
Yeah, after all the, all three reports.
And. Well, here's. I mean, we've got a legislative report because we have the legislator.
Right. But is that a procedure that's?
Yeah, I mean. We're, I think we're, we have, we, we often change the order.
That's set in stone that you can't change, when you have the meeting, you can't take these out of order, it's. It's a guidance, it's a guidance in here.
His idea, it's up to him anyways.
I usually run it by him before we.
Right. Yeah.
But just having the public hearings.
Up top.
Top part, and everything else comes after that, in whatever order we want. And legislator could be administrator slash administrat- uh, administrator before type of thing, if you want that there.
Select board chair, make the, uh, agenda?
Yeah, I mean, they have the official. I think that's true with all boards.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
Scroll on down.
There it is, chairman alter the order.
Right, it's number ten.
Number ten, okay. Tell me when, stop. Keep going.
Going back to board packets, number four A. Um, applications must include a summary form regarding the application, what, what does that mean?
Well, we're not gonna define that here. I think that, that form, in my opinion, could change a couple times a year, if we need, needed, need to. And we, we gotta perfect that.
Right, we're gonna come up with basically a checklist of what's supposed to be submitted.
Or an application to be.
And an application to be complete, and if something's unchecked, then they should have been asking for a waiver. And it just gives us a. Supposed to be here.
The new checklist.
Yeah.
Yeah. That would be excellent.
So is the summary form a complete checklist? For their application?
I think what this says is enough, you know?
Yeah.
Guidance that we, you know, that's all it.
Yeah. Right, this is what our regs say is supposed to be submitted.
Right.
And were they, was it submitted?
This is just a working document for us also, the procedures.
Yeah.
Keep scrolling.
Keep going.
Not sure why that number four is in blue, I couldn't.
Because we changed, there's new wording at the end.
End of the track changes. So, you asked for a disclaimer, that's what I came up with.
Yeah.
We can wordsmith that further if you'd like.
Nope, I think that does exactly what it's supposed to do, it says if you decide you don't wanna come do this, then, and you have a technical issue. It's your problem, not our problem.
Right.
And it's, and the applicant, it's up the applicant to elect to postpone the hearing, well, it's also gonna be up to us if you can't do it.
That's my only question, should the board, the board should also be able to.
Right, if he's having issues, he can't show his plaque, or he can't come up with some documents. Um, that he's supposed to be here in paper.
Right.
And he wants to do remotely online, if we can't see it, if, if the public can't see it.
Right.
Well, the other problem too with public Zoom, they need to be, uh, well, me- meetings, we wanna call it. If the public can't see either presence in the room or online, see what the applicant is supposed to be showing. That's an issue also.
If, if we can see it in the room, that would meet the requirements, because again, everything online.
Or if we can't, if we can't put it online, that's also their problem.
Right, like if somebody only brings paper, that's acceptable.
That's acceptable.
Right, that's.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, going back to public hearings, number three.
Yep.
Um, if the board determines that the application is not complete. Do we have to close the hearing, or can we continue it to a date certain?
I feel if it's not complete, the applicant knew what was supposed to be submitted, he didn't submit a waiver. Um.
Or the waiver was denied.
I mean, a waiver doesn't have to be approved, it's not a rubber stamp waiver request, approval. Then I think he goes. Reschedules, a new hearings.
New application.
New application.
New fee.
New, new team, right, right, it's not, it's not like, oh, I meant to give this.
Yeah, I'm not gonna go that far.
New fee.
I'm not gonna go that far that, that there's a new fee.
If they've spent five hundred and fifty dollars or something.
Then a continuation.
Continue, you have to continue the, you continue to hear.
Well, you couldn't you, couldn't you just informally waive the fee and have them resubmit? So I don't like doing that.
Yeah, but you have to, you're right, Tim, you can and you, you have to.
Well, I'd rather have a continuation.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you continue to hear.
And it continues on that same fee, and at the next meeting, the stuff is still not submitted, that's, I mean. The application is the, it's the basic stuff that needs to be at least get the.
I mean, you can continue the hearing for forty-five days after they, you know, initially do it. And at that point in time, if we don't have enough information, you know, we can say, sorry.
When's the clock start to?
The clock will start ticking.
Right, that's my concern.
So the forty-five days doesn't really come into play.
No, because we haven't accepted the application. It's not a complete.
But how can you continue something if you haven't even accepted it as to start it? You have to.
I think we're, we're telling the applicant that you're, sorry, your, your application is incomplete.
Right.
You need to submit a complete application, here's a list of things we're.
That we're missing.
But, given the circumstances, and whatever they may be, we, we, we won't require you to submit it, uh, to pay a new, a new fee.
Except for, well, there's the fee involved, there's the town fees, and then there's the butter notification.
You're already giving them about a notification.
But not if you haven't started the hearing, you can't do a continuation if you haven't opened a hearing.
Okay, but what.
Open a hearing without, without an application being complete.
But what this says, number one, the chairman shall call the hearing to session.
Right.
Okay, so that's the first thing that happens, then you say, shall, the chairman shall ask if there's ex parte communications. Um, then we get to the part about the application being complete, administrator says yea or nay. Chairman asks the board if they agree, board says yea or nay, if it's not complete, then the chairman summarizes. Why, and then closes the hearing. And.
Right.
You know, my, my question here is. I- is this really the order and, and, and the, i- i- is this the order that we want things to happen? And if we open the hearing and then close it, then. You know, the applicant is really left hanging, and the whole thing has to be rewarned, re notified, et cetera, et cetera. If we do this part about the application being complete or incomplete. Before the hearing is opened, then that's a whole different scenario. And if, and then, you know, we could also, um, continue the hearing. I mean, w- it, it, I, I think we, we are not thinking this through as well as we should.
I, I, I get your point.
You're. You're determining if the application is complete sufficient to open it here. And if it's not, then you don't open here.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Right.
But that's not what, that's not what this draft says.
Yeah, I mean, what is the, it's, what comes first, do you? Open a public hearing and then ask the application for the application to be complete, or do you? Ask for the application to be complete, it's accepted as, the application is accepted. Then you open a public hearing for discussion on the application.
I think it's the latter. You, you make sure that you have a, an application that is. As complete as can be reasonably foreseen as possible.
Well, enough to accept.
Yeah, I mean, there, there may be other things that come up.
But it's, we have this checklist of this has to be.
I guess, I guess we're, we're probably saying the same thing, except the difference is. If it's, if they haven't filled out the checklist, it never should come here to get one.
Right, right, but if they wanna, but if they overrule and say, nope, I'm gonna go forward, I'm just gonna ask, I'm gonna ask the board.
You don't have a complete application to turn in.
Right.
Application, you can't have a hearing.
But if they submitted their fees, and, and Rob. You know, says, look, this is stuff that's needed, the board's gonna be asking for this, and they say, well, I'm just gonna do it anyways. Because that's what they wanna do, I mean, it's, I'm just saying.
At that point, couldn't Rob not put him on the agenda?
They don't have the ability to get on the agenda if they don't have a complete application.
Okay.
At least Rob has to be satisfied.
But if Rob, if Rob is in the situation where maybe, maybe not, I don't know.
If, if they fill the checklist, and the checklist is all checked, they have the right to have a hearing at that point.
Yeah.
And we have to say it's complete because it's our checklist.
Right, right.
We can't come in with something later saying, well, no, we wanted this, but it wasn't on the checklist.
Okay.
So your application isn't complete.
But I, you could have objections to the quality of the.
Which we've done.
Right, right, I mean, quality is a separate issue.
It's a separate issue.
That's a separate, this is. To be submitted.
And you didn't submit it, or you didn't submit a waiver.
Right, well, which just happened, the other meeting, the last meeting with, um, people on Smith Pond Road.
Matt Middle.
They came in at, at, with, at the meeting with, here's my plan.
Right.
It's like, no, this plan should have been, it should have said, no.
Been with the package.
Right, it should have been with the package, and the other reason it should be with the package is that if in a, if a. Someone, and a butter, a butter especially, because they have legal standing. Wants to see the information prior to the meeting. They have that two week period, or whatever that period is, from submission, submission to, to agenda on. Agenda dates, it's three weeks, they have those three weeks to show up and look at this information.
Right.
And if it's not there, and it's only submitted to us at the meeting, your butter never got a chance to see it.
Right.
And they could cold, take us to court over that. Um, now, now, Grant, most of ninety-nine percent of the time, nobody from the butters is even interested. So it just gets, gets rolled through, but when you have an application where the butters are interested. And the information's being presented at the meeting.
Yep.
That's, that becomes.
It's not fair to them.
It's not fair to them, and we're gonna get caught, we're gonna be the ones being sued in court, and after we defend ourselves in court. We're accepting something that wasn't complete. Uh, or should have been submitted, or asked for a written waiver. And that's where the, that's where it comes into that danger zone. Because now.
I, I, I think the, the conky gravel pit thing is a perfect example.
Right, that was another one, right, right. Uh, and that's, and it, you know, like I said, where someone says, no, I'm gonna go forward, I, here's my check, I'm going forward. Um, so they come before rods, and that's where we have to hold the line, saying, sorry. You didn't submit the stuff you're supposed to. you didn't submit the stuff you're supposed to. We can't go forward with your application until we see it.
Now, if, um, if I wanted to request a waiver of one or more of those requirements, wouldn't that, wouldn't that need to be submitted to us for a decision before the application is submitted?
Um, it's like, I'm requesting a waiver for a full boundary line survey. Uh, but it has to be requested with the app, it has to be in the package that's submitted to us as a wa- waiver request. And then, and then we vote on whether we'll accept that waiver request or not.
And we do that before we open the hearing, as we did with, um, Matt Niddle.
Uh, it seems like, getting back to the point you made, that we should have a, a pre-hearing determination about the application being complete.
Isn't that what Rob does?
No, no, as a board, as a board, before we vote to accept, we need to say. Before you open the hearing, are we gonna go forward with the public hearing?
Well, a- again, that's, you know, ninety-nine percent of what we do, um, everything is copacetic. And from, from my point of view, you know, we ask Rob, is it complete? Rob says yes. We ask the board members, is it complete? If you've looked at it and you think that it isn't, that's kind of the time to, to bring it up and say, I don't think it's complete. Because we need A, B, C, and D.
That's right, because the, you're right, the order is, is the application complete. We vote on whether the application is complete, and that's when you say, I'm opening the public hearing.
After that.
After that, okay.
Three A, basically.
If you don't mind, I can co-work on that, now that I understand where you wanna go with.
Well, three becomes number one, and then, and then he moved down from there basically.
Probably, but let me just, I gotta think about the, the wording here.
You, you can't just cut and paste on that, because number three has the, uh,
Then close.
Has the hearing being closed, but, you know, if that's the first.
Don't think much to do, but that, that.
It, it, it needs some, some editing.
So is the, uh, the stuff in blue, is that okay, or we, we just,
the part about remote?
Yeah, because Eric raised the point.
The, the only thing you'd add is, in the last sentence, is the applicant or the board may elect to postpone the hearing. I'm just wondering if the, how can the.
I think only the board can do.
Only the board can do it. How can the applicant go to postpone it? He didn't bring this, he hasn't got the stuff. We're the only ones that can.
Can request the board to postpone.
Yeah, but they can do that anyway, it's, it's, as far as this topic goes, with the board, it would be the one making the decision.
Votes to say, this isn't working.
Replace the word applicant with the word board. Cause the.
Well, wait a minute. So, if, if the, if the virtual meeting breaks down, and the applicant is counting on, say, a consultant who's participating remotely, something he's showing on.
From New Zealand.
Something he's showing on, on their screen. And we're unable to do that. The applicant's saying, could say to themselves, that, look, this is important to my presentation, and since we can't do it tonight because there's a power outage, I don't know whatever, if, I, I wanna, I wanna postpone the hearing.
They can certainly, they can request that anytime, but it's the board that makes the decision. When hearings are, that's.
So it should say the applicant may.
May request.
Rather than a postponement, why don't we call it a continuation? Because it could happen in the middle of the hearing.
Right, there's one thing, and it was like, oh, suddenly, the computer crashes, or he loses his internet connection, or whatever.
I mean, again, I think it's just the board can elect to continue the hearing. Cause it honestly, it doesn't matter what the applicant wants, like, we can also say, this isn't working. And they can make a request, and we can say, look, we actually have enough information, we wanna just. You know, cause the other, cause the risk that runs is, oh, I think I'm losing, I'd like a continuation to come back in two weeks with new information. You don't put, you don't put, you don't give that, that decision-making authority to the people who aren't making decisions.
I thought that someone had to show up in person, or nominate someone to speak.
But if they've got a, if they've got a, their surveyor is a hundred fifty miles away, and he's got a presentation, he's gonna do it online.
Like how white trees are gonna get cut.
Exactly, how the trees, like Liberty.
That's the yellows. Well, we may determine that actually the plats they provided are adequate, and we can make a decision tonight.
But I really like you said, a consultant, that's the engineer giving the, like a cell tower, and the engineer is remote, and he gives this, so like, answer questions from the public and the board, on, and so, and then his computer crashes. Okay, do we wanna continue? Uh, we get enough, do we need his information to? Or not?
I think that's this body's decision. Well, well, I, I, yes, it is our decision, but I can, I can see where the, where an applicant may say, look, I've just lost all my supporting documents here remotely, I want, I, I, I don't want this hearing to go forward. They can always request that. Making any requests. My point is, if you write down that they can request it, that's implying that we have to accept.
But only the board votes to, to continue, to postpone or not.
And it gets away from, and it reinforces that the online, while super valuable, it serves us well. It is a courtesy.
And that's the other thing.
It's fallible.
That's the other thing, Tim, is you gotta get rid of the word postpone, and change it to continue. As the clock starts.
The clock is still ticking.
If I postpone. It's gonna be a new clock.
Yeah, postpone is, yeah, a new.
That's right.
Continue the hearing at a later date?
Uh, a date certain.
At a date certain.
Date certain, you have to have a, a date to continue.
Because the public has the right to come, so yeah, that's what it's, Tom gets run into with the casino.
So, um, remote, let me just read this, maybe this, remote participation is provided as a curse, courtesy comma, and is subject to, and instead of but, is subject to physical limitations, equipment, software, and provided for such purposes. Technical issues hinder or preclude, the board may continue the hearing to a date certain. Yes?
Yeah, yes, yes.
And that keeps the applicant right out of it. The applicant asks us to do it, it's up to us to do it. And that keeps the applicant completely out of this.
And generally, we would be receptive. You know, we're reasonable people here, I think.
Unless we said, no, I think we got enough, we can make the decision today. I think we can make the decision to approve, I'm not sure if we could make the decision to not approve.
Yeah, it's not approval would be a little trickier.
Joint meetings, is that the next piece? Yeah, the top of five looks good.
There was, I was there on joint meetings, that's called those. Who does what? I don't know, I don't have them in front of me to know of this.
I like the destiny, we consider most simplified.
That email that somebody sent you, had a section on joint meetings. That was based on the.
Okay, that's it.
Anything else?
Well, this section here is.
Should you change it to select board instead of board or selectman?
No, we're officially. Ask whatever we changed, whatever we said we were gonna start doing. Well, we made a, we actually talked about it in.
I might even, I may even go shorter than that. And say the board might participate in jo- joint public meetings and hearings with other boards and commi- and committees, period. Rather than the.
Rather than listed.
Rather than every board in creation, because.
More like that.
The Methodist Hill Group's gonna be mad because we didn't put them there. And they're gonna be coming to a land use building, they are a land use type of, that we probably are gonna talk with.
Joint Law Committee. So, s- drop the part about other towns and cities.
Just stop it at in committees.
That's simple.
And not list the committees.
And not list the committees at all.
Right, cause that changes.
The historic district commission's on there, but not the heritage commission.
And now they're gonna be mad, right?
Looks like black people, oh, they're gonna be.
I think the second point is fine. Yeah, I do too.
Well, we're pretty close to being done.
There's one line I was hoping to add, we skipped over the section. Decisions, I think. Oh, it's page, decision seven, eight, yeah. In the decisions. Um, I would like to see a line, and they have that, um, D.
Where?
Um, on decisions.
What page?
A, top of eight. The board shall act to approve.
The top of eight, line two, five, nine.
Um, I mean, the line there was fine, I would just like to add something that, um, that board members are required to cast a vote. And, um, a yea or nay vote, yes or no, not abstain. When you're voting on an application. This happened in the past.
Why can't, why can't somebody abstain?
Is that state law?
No, no, but it's, but you're, you're in a public hearing, you're doing a public hearing, you heard the whole thing, you're sitting, you're sitting as a member. You should be voting, should be voting yes or no.
You can't tell me I can't abstain. But you can't tell me I can't abstain, but.
He's trying to tell you, you can't abstain.
It doesn't make any difference if he tells me, this is a working document, there's called a state law, one has a right to abstain.
Oh, it's not in the state law either.
Nothing is in the state law, so you can't tell me I can't, and try doing it someday.
I just feel that, if you sit through a hearing as a member.
Circumstances, right?
You shouldn't be sitting at the hearing, you should abstain, you should have refused, you should have refused. If you're unable to cast a vote, you should have refused. That's by.
I know.
Duly noted.
Duly noted.
Well, you would have to.
On D.
But you can't make me refuse. Right, so, I didn't refuse, but I did abstain.
Let's see where you might, you know, based on how the hearing goes, though, someone might really not want to vote one way or.
Yeah, but we're here, right, I, I understand, I understand them, that you feel like, if somebody's gonna be mad at me, no matter what I do, someone's gonna be mad at me. But it's like. As a member.
I agree, correct, you shouldn't abstain, but you can't tell somebody they can't abstain. Cause if you abstain, you're basically saying, I don't care.
Right, right, you shouldn't have sat.
You shouldn't have sat.
If you feel that, un- uncomfortable with voting.
You didn't find out till halfway through the hearing that you should have refused.
If something came up, and it's like, oh, someone raises an issue that you didn't think about.
So I would suggest adding by majority vote. On line D, the board shall act to approve, conditionally approve, or disapprove by majority vote. Does that, apparently, if you're gonna disapprove of something, you have to have a majority vote.
I think that's in the RSN, or the ZPA forever. That's, you have to have a affirmative vote, and for whatever decision, the decision is.
And if you disprove, disapprove, you also have to give reason.
Yeah, yeah.
Does that have to be as part of the hearing, or can that be done as part of the written decision?
I think it's the written statement. Your vote, and then you state why.
You decide, but, yeah, but it, then.
Based, based on the minutes, based, yeah, based on the discussion and the minutes, and it better be somewhere in the minutes that you're going back to. Because if it's not in the minutes, and you're all of a sudden coming up with all these reasons after the facts. You're gonna be before the courts.
Anything else?
Well, what do you wanna do in terms of approving this, is bring it back one more time?
Bring it back again, I, you know, I'd like to see a, a clean copy.
Yeah, without, without any highlighting, just.
Whatever you change.
Well, I think we should highlight the items that are different from the, you know.
I just wanna make sure we don't.
How about, how about only the changes we made tonight?
Be back doing the same thing again.
We've approved everything else, only the stuff we changed tonight.
Really, the only thing left is that part about the, the pre-hearing.
Flipping the pre-hearing and the majority vote.
Only mail your way.
And I'll even sign this little word in two, two weeks.
Make a motion that we.
I would second that.
All in favor?
I oppose tensions.
You can stay here all night if you abstain.
How's budget going? Meeting's really marred, we're gonna get the auditor's statement.